I call this meeting to order. And the first item of business is the adoption of the agenda. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Counselor Korlick, Counselor Maslin, all those in favor? And the minutes, we have public feedback from June the 15th. Can I have a motion to adopt the public feedback session minutes? And Counselor Studley, Counselor Maslin, no one opposed, all those in favor? And the adoption of the regular June 15th regular meeting minutes, a motion to adopt? Counselor Korlick, seconded by Counselor Maslin, any, and all those in favor? Any, any, any business arising from those regular minutes on June 15th? Counselor Zelinski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple things, 7B motocross access issues and 7G DMAPs. In terms of where the money's coming from for these, motocross changes out of operating and the the DMAP and the sort of accelerating stuff on 19th Street all coming under the DMAP funding. Is that correct?
I'm not sure how to answer that.
Sorry, I missed, so the motocross funding, we're talking about the gates, is that what we're referring to?
Yeah.
Yeah, so those gates, we have the materials on site, so it's really going to be some staff time. But the, so motocross is not coming out of DMAP. Your question regarding, sorry, what was the other question?
Well, just as long as you know the, the, the gates, all that money's coming out of operating and the the stuff on DMAP, no new funding, it's all coming out of DMAP, which is accelerating at, at site.
Yeah, so that's a included project, sorry, you're talking about the erosion control?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's a, that is an included project within the, within the budget, within the project, and it's not new funding, it's just been expedited.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Council, and we did vote on those regular minutes. Moving us down with no petitions and delegations to the reports from Councillors. We have no written reports, am I understanding? So we'll just go around the clock here. Counselor Korlick, anything to report on your personal and representing the regional district?
Yes, lots actually. I'll just start with Council report. Boundary Museum is reconvening their strategic planning. It'll start in July, and it's going to be held outdoors. So that, that's going to be kind of fun to get back and organize them that one and to see where they're heading. I started this morning at 8 o'clock because I'm participating in the B.C. Rural and First Nations Health and Wellness Summit. I'm on the, in the table on, with a group of Boundary participants. At this point, there's over 900 people registered and participating in that summit, so it's going to be pretty interesting. Already listened to Judy Darcy, so the Minister of Health and Ment- Mental Health and Addictions. So she had a nice conversation there. And from that, some of the priority conversations for the summit will be the virtually enhanced care, transportation, which I think is pretty important. Cultural and safety, for cultural, you know, disrespecting the cultural differences and how they need to be looked after. And of course, mental health and addictions and COVID-19 recovery and care. And at this point in time, we, up until this year and COVID, the addiction overdoses were down year over year. And not so much now. We've so far lost 550 people that have died this year. And it's based on the fact that COVID-19 came in and drug supply has changed, I guess, I don't know. And it's especially toxic, and we run into that here too. So it's pretty common and unfortunate in this situation. So, yeah, so the deaths from overdoses were down year over year. And it's just to say that the First Nations communities have done much better than the rest of the province with COVID-19. It's just the way they've managed to isolate themselves and, and protect their, the communities they all live in. So that's worked really well. And what else here?
Counselor Korlick, could you repeat the name of the, sorry, could you repeat the name of that group? It was at the very beginning of your report.
B.C. Rural and First Nations Health and Wellness Summit.
Sounds great.
It's running today and tomorrow, starts at 8 o'clock in the morning and goes to whatever it ends.
Excellent.
So I put two hours in on that this morning, we're pretty close. And I, further to that, I just want to compliment the grads and congratulate them on their parade, I think that was great. And I was downtown on Market, and it was great to see so many people out cheering them on and wishing them well. And, and once it was over, then I spoke to a number of people that were there. And they were full of compliments on the gardens and how nice downtown and the community is looking. So thank you, Public Works, for all your hard work.
Yeah.
And they also commented on closure of Market. And at first, you know, they were a little bit wary, but we had a pretty good conversation. And they determined that it's going to be okay, and it's only an experiment, it's only going to last a few months. It's not, I mean, at least trying. So let's get, let's educate people and get them moving forward with that. So they were quite supportive and all that, I thought that was good. Let me just see what else. So I will be meeting with the DBA Nikki Best this afternoon. They're going to be working downtown doing, getting ready to close Market by making it look better, planting and whatever. And I'll be asking, talking to her about issues and positive things that are going on with the economic recovery of the downtown, simply because I'm going to be on a call with Selena Robinson on the 2nd. So I get to chat with her about things like that. Chamber is also, Jeff Farrow, I've been talking with him, and he will also be participating. So we're going to get different aspects and different views and the way people will be responding to different things. So I think that's going to be an interesting opportunity for us to discuss grants works and our, our health and wellness. I think, I think we've got lots of potential and things going on there. Okay, that I think is Council, it's Council mostly. And then for RDKB, I don't know, it seems like such a long time that I hadn't meeting with them, but it hasn't been that long. And again, it was for them that I, I went to, I'm just getting in the summit, so all the information they provided. Well, that's good, let me think, what else is going on? There's just so much stuff happening right now. And the communication, so that's changing a little bit because now it will be focused on the response to COVID-19 and floods. So it'll be changing to what's happening in the rural area and different communications. And Francis, I think, is trying to get better communications out that, and maybe more frequent, that everybody can realize, and it will be all on the RDKB site. And on that side too is the Housing and Housing Needs Assessment Survey. And so that's working on that. And we've had a huge, oh man, well, 668-page agenda for the last RDKB meeting. Though if I don't remember it all, that's why. And we did a lot on the forestry and how it's relating to our area and community. And lots of questions and concerns about how it's managed. And, and Saldar is certainly playing an interesting role in all this, about stumpage rates and fees and wanting something specific. But I personally feel that one outfit should not be separated from everyone else and get a better stumpage rate. I think if you're going to do that, it's for everybody, that's my thoughts. Because it's important for me and our community to keep our Intifor going and everything else. So I think it needs to be up there, that they come to the table on equal basis. So I think that's important. And the fact that Intifor is tenured for their wood loss and all their timber sales, that plays a huge part in the forestry industry here. It's like Vogan Brothers, they have to go and bid and they don't have tenured forests. So that's a whole different situation for them. And it's so, how they have to approach things and how it all goes is pretty, it's very complicated, but interesting. And also talking about water rights. I don't know if it's water rights, but it's the companies that want to take the water, like Nestle's and around Hope area, they want to take the water and bottle it and then sell it. And personally, I'm not really supportive of that. I, the survey and the research that's been done is at least five years old. The, so they're not really aware of the aquifer and there's farmers and ranches that are really concerned about all that because nobody really knows at this point what the past five years has wrought or how it's, you know, we've had drought, we've had fires, we've had rain, climate change is affecting so many things. So I, that's being looked into and it's pretty interesting and all that. I mean, I, I will say that the RDKB and the BCDC has certainly opened my eyes to all sorts of things. I didn't know anything about this peripheral. And so it's, it's been a, it's a real learning experience. I think there's, oh, and communication, that's coming to play a big thing too. And that's with the rural, well, you know as well as I do, you get up Highway 33 and there is no self-service. Highway 3, self-service is intermittent. So that's a big discussion that's going on now, how to improve the communication lines and the accessibility wherever we're, wherever we may be traveling. So those are some of the, a few of the things that are being worked on. And we'll see where we, we head through all that. A little leaving that, those topics from the RDKB, moving on to the Health Board and the, all that. We have not meeting until October, so with COVID-19 and recovery, we're just decided that it would be better to wait. So October to meet with that. So I get to sum it up from that one. I think that's, that's all I have to say right now. I've got pages of notes, they're not very organized, I do confess. Anyway, that's it for me for now, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Korlick, and welcome, Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, I was having difficulty logging in this morning.
We knew you were coming. And moving around the table, Counselor Zelinski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I hope the only thing I'd like to report on is I was part of a webinar for RDKB. Put on, on Climate Change for the Boundary, I don't know how many other people joined in. It was a new Zoom-type meeting for me, which was great. Christina ran a great meeting there and I was pretty impressed. A couple of things that I took away from that meeting was that these storm events that we're having, having, the, I guess, the big rainfall and the dry summers are going to be frequent in the, in the future, is what they say. More, more intense and more frequent extremes, basically. So it was good. I think they put it online, if anyone's interested. I thought I can find the link for you if you're interested. Other than that, I enjoyed the grad parade too. It was good, it was nice to see the kids out there and wish them all a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Maslin?
Yes, thanks Mayor. I, you know, I usually hand in a written report, but this time you get the benefit of me reading it and rather than having to ad lib with it, anyhow, so I'll read it. Unfortunately, I missed the Tuesday morning deadline for this week's Council report. Like many people, I've been busy bowling lawns, fixing breakers and walking dogs. There are beautiful countryside. I do have a bit to report on, some of it's not very comfortable. At the last Council meeting, it was decided to not support the installation of water bodies and to have Washington Station up a portal. That was on Monday, so when on Thursday I was in a weekly conference call, I had to explain this decision to over a dozen folks. We're working hard to deliver services to our community during the COVID pandemic. Anyways, I am always hopeful that these folks will continue to provide the services and that Council will eventually work out our way forward to a more comprehensive solution. I also visited Kev Arshen on Riverside Drive to check out the long-term drainage problems at Sands Townhouses. Unfortunately, torrential rains, which Mr. Kepa spoke about. And it's interesting, we have two complaints in front of us about surface water, not rainwater. Anyhow, unfortunately, torrential rains from valley heights end up pooling in the townhouse parking lot. Most of the time, the installed storm sewer pipes handle the flow, but when it is really extremely torrential, the current piping is overwhelmed and runs across the road, spills into the parking lot where it remains and can even flood crawl spaces of a couple of the units. This is not going to be an easy fix. This problem is going to be rectified eventually with the installation of the two DMAP projects scheduled for this area. The Grand Bay Road Race and the new trail dig from Central Bridge to Womack Road. Unfortunately, this work is not going to start for some time. I also want to report that there was a regular Zoom meeting of the Social Services Advisory Group on Wednesday, June 24th. The news here is a bit mixed. Boundary Family Support Services is committed to continuing the COVID outreach for the vulnerable populations after the end of July. When asked Wellness will finish their contract with B.C. Housing. Boundary Family Support Services is also committed to providing a cold weather shelter this coming year and put forth its draft extreme weather response plan for the group to review and comment on. The hard part is that there's still no location for the shelter. The group will be meeting again in July to try to solve this old dilemma. Also, on June 24th, was the first Zoom meeting of the Discover Grant Works Committee that was established to implement the guidance of Roger Brooks in the downtown revitalization. There was discussion about the need for a portal nude for the downtown area. Although recommended by Brooks, this is an expensive all-weather high-tech bathroom that will have to connect to city mains in the downtown core. You know, and I certainly have been following, and further on ahead on our agenda, Mayor, we will be talking about plans for our downtown. And I appreciate the comments that Counselor Korlick provided in her report about that as well. Anyhow, as an aside, another item discussed at that meeting was the potential installation of the David Sevendere's beautiful stone culture, Shining Raven Woman, at the confluence of the rivers. Unfortunately, it's impossible to pick the exact location at this time because in the next year, new trail dives as well as new storm sewer installations are going to be built along Riverside. Incidentally, if you wish to see this beautiful work face-to-face, you can catch a glimpse of it on the corner of 7th and Central, where David has been carving it under his gazebo. And of course, it was grad, our town loves a parade, quite often there's more people in the parade than are watching it. Anyhow, this one was very well thought out and managed. And I note that it had a lot to do with cars. Keep that in mind. Kathy and I pulled up our bag chairs at the Daryl Great Trestle and brought our treasured long-term school bells to ring the grads' bong. Congrats to the grads and their families and the grad committee for showing us how to work with a new social distancing etiquette. And just one bar last, shout out to the Grand Forest Trail Society, which is having its ATM this evening through Zoom. Check out their Facebook, Facebook page to find the links to that. Fortunately, new volunteers have come forward to add their efforts to stewarding and promoting our trail system. Anyhow, Mayor, thank you, that's my report.
Thank you, Counselor Maslin, and Counselor Studley?
Yeah, so I'd also like to congratulate the grads on their parade, I wish I had some of that. When I was in school, I hope that they keep up some form of that as part of the tradition. Talking with my sister-in-law, she said very glad to have been here, they liked that. So a big thumbs up to this year's grads for their way to adapt similarly to the circumstances. Speaking of parades, there is going to be another one on Canada Day, not official city one, but just keep, everybody keep your eyes open, I just put as maybe come around to your neighborhood. There is the street cruise coming up, so everybody just come up and support local businesses, there's going to be some excellent stuff happening.
Counselor Studley, can I ask you, we're getting really poor transmission of your voice, we're getting a lot of interference and missing what you're saying.
Okay, just second here.
That's better.
Okay, how's that?
That's better, sorry to interrupt you.
Okay, no worries. I was done, do you want me to repeat anything or?
Yeah, you can back it up a few slots.
Okay, yeah, so I just congratulated the grads. I gave the heads up to sort of our own version, not the city's version, but independent version of a candidate parade that's coming up. And I just wanted to give people a heads up about the market closure, so come over and support the local businesses. There's also going to be some great stuff happening with that.
All right, thank you, Zach, Counselor Studley. Counselor Krog?
Nothing to add, other than that similar congratulations to the grads and stuff. I was out of the cannon until I couldn't attend the parade.
Right, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Thompson?
Thank you. I also want to congratulate all the grads. I was able to watch the sorride over at my sister-in-law's with her family, and it was just, it was great. I just, the RCP leading the parade and, and blowing the siren off almost constantly, followed by our fire department and, and the ambulance bringing up the, the, it was, it was just, just great. And the parents of one of the grads, who are friends of ours, just said it was the best ever. They, they really did a bang-up job. I'd also like to say that last week, I came in to pay my property taxes and we walked, my husband and I walked down Market. And I was so impressed with how clean it is, how open it is, people sitting out and having coffee or a meal. It, it, it just, it just did my heart good. And I have to congratulate both the public work staff and the business community. They've just done a fantastic job. And I'd also like to say that I had occasion to be out of town in another municipality last week on Friday. And that community didn't hold a candle to what our city is doing. There were no restaurants where you could go in and sit down and be served. It was not a very well-kept, clean municipality. And, and we stayed and what we had to do, forced ourselves to choke down McDonald, Burger and Kimmel. So again, I just have to say how inviting our, our city is. And I just have to say my congratulations to everybody involved. And that's my report.
Thank you, Counselor. I, I don't often, but I think I should start more in using this slot to make a few comments from the Mayor as one of the councilors. I have a couple of things I'd like to bring attention to. The formal opening of the DIS golf will be this coming week. Already very popular, a lot of people out there, so we're going to do a kind of river, ribbon-cutting ceremony of some kind just to let more of the public know. I'd like to begin work with the Fall Fair Society on establishing a movable stage, which I think could be very beneficial to the downtown revitalization. We've needed one for a long time. If you remember back about 10 years ago when we had Telus or Fortis, I can't remember who onboard, we couldn't find a, Counselor Thompson might remember, we couldn't find a sponsor to look after it. The Fall Fair is coming forward now, saying that they would not only support it and fundraise for it, but they would also look after it, rent it out and keep it up. So I'm, I'm going to use my awesome power as Mayor to see if we can get some corporate donations to that cause. That, that's pretty much it at this point. We have a radio opportunity for Council, and I believe we'll be talking about it further in terms of our general communications plan that's evolving. That's it, and can I have a motion to accept Council reports? Counselor Studley, Counselor Maslin, all those in favor?
I just, I just had a question, Mayor, on year before. I thought that there was a portal stage at one time.
There is a flat deck reefer, which is about a four-foot drop that is used fairly regularly by different groups. But having played on this stage, it's very dangerous. Zach might comment, it's, it's difficult to work with Zach.
Yeah, there was a flatbed, and that sort of hung on as long as it could. And eventually it had to be decommissioned, it was just sort of deemed unsafe. And it was a bit too narrow to begin with, so you'd always have to build up these little extensions. It was just a big castle, and eventually, maybe five years ago, it got decommissioned.
Thank you very much, Counselor Studley. All right, Counselor Krog? I asked him for a report. Yeah?
Well, did you, sorry, I see.
Yes, he, he said that he had nothing, he didn't.
Yeah.
He said congratulating the grads. I would never neglect Counselor Krog. Sorry, I missed that. All right, Council, all those in favor? Gary? All right, where are we here with the agenda? I'm, I've got myself messed around on my reports. Is that already there?
Uh, recommendations from staff.
Okay, yes, there's no delegation, so we're not doing delegations. Bringing us to fire service asset disposal item. Council, you've read the report, you understand we're looking to waive the formal process here so that we can get those specialty water equipment in the right hands of search and rescue. And can I have a motion to achieve that?
Counselor Maslin.
Counselor Maslin, and who seconded it? Counselor Krog. Discussion on this matter?
Yeah, thanks Mayor, I'm not too sure if I ended up moving that. I didn't mean to move it. Nonetheless, I just need to get on the floor to be discussed. You know, I guess I'm always kind of apprehensive about losing access to some of this equipment. I know that, you know, I, I have the greatest respect for our fire department, our fire team, I really do. And if it's, if it's recommended by staff, I will support the motion. I'm just apprehensive about losing access, ready access to this equipment. I know that the equipment, that is the dry suits and robes, are deemed, you know, superfluous to needs. It's just that I know what the results can be when you don't have that equipment. And uh, I also know that emergencies don't often come by the playbook. And sometimes there's a statistical, you know, there's an emergent situation that might be unique, unfortunately. And have uh unique repercussions. I, but I do have one question there. If I could ask staff, I, I was trying to figure out, uh, we're, we're asked to waive council eight oh five, policy eight oh five rather. Could staff please help tell me what part of that policy are we trying to waive? What is the exemption? Thank you.
Okay, and let me answer your first question first. I'd be very surprised if our fire chief and C A O have not addressed the issue of the potential for a unique or unusual situation in terms of the recommendation by staff to get this material in the hands of search and rescue. Uh, and answering your second question, I'll leave it to C A O.
Sure, so three worship, it's a, it's a loose, sorry, I'll, I'll back up. So the policy isn't necessarily specific and we probably could have moved forward. However, there is some vague, um, where it refers to an open process. And in this particular case, we are getting market value. However, we are, we are specifying who we're gonna dispose of the asset to, uh, to a service provider who will continue to provide that service within our community. So, uh, it's a good news story. On the second uh part, I guess going back to the first question and I'll lean on George a little bit. Essentially, we've changed our policy to say we're not going to deliver this service anymore. We're not gonna train our firefighters to deliver this service anymore. And therefore, this equipment is no longer of use for us because we won't be trained to use it properly. Correct?
That's correct, yeah. In order to, sorry, through the mayor, in order to continue to use the, the dry suits, they have to have, our firefighters have to maintain their certifications and a level of training. Those, the training or the certifications have since expired. The, the equipment has really been sitting on the shelf since 2018, with the exception of, of the freshet event there where we used it for the rescues. Other than that, it's, it's had a long shelf life. Uh, as most of you are aware, it, it won't last long on the shelf. The, the zippers, things like that, they only have a, a certain time span.
Counselor Moslin, that answers your concerns. Uh, do we have this motion on the table?
Yes, Mayor. I, you know, the tragic part is, as I was witness to a drowning, uh, as many people were, and I believe the year was 2016. And a man was left in the icy river for the loss or lack of qualified divers to get in the dry suit and go rescue. That's, that's, that has left a mark on you. Uh, we, you know, we do live in a, a city that is surrounded by two rivers. Those, and they're rivers, and these, those rivers be wild. Um, I, you know, I, I understand the playbook and I, I, I kind of, I know, I understand there's rules that govern us and make us safe. It's just, I just want to point out sometimes emergencies happen that don't follow the rules. You know, anyhow, certainly I support, I am apprehensive, uh, your, uh, your worship, but I, uh, I thought, I see the wisdom in transferring the the equipment to those who, who might make, who will make good use of it. So thank you for carrying me out. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. And Counselor Zelinski, then Counselor Thompson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, uh, I was just wondering what's the, what is the value of the dry suits and the robe that could be, wanna?
Generally, round figures?
Uh, about $3,000.
Um, because if I, if, if people are inclined, I have no problem, since it's not gonna affect the, the fire services budget, I have no problem donating it to those people. Uh, it's the same money going around, so $3,000 I don't think will break the budget. And so if anyone wants to jump on that, at them, it does not go away.
I think that would probably need to be a motion, but at this point, it seems like the parties have come together with agreement on the cost of it, that it's not gonna be a big issue.
Correct. So three worship, correct? Um, George has been working with search and rescue and they've agreed to pay market value. Council definitely could dispose of it for free to the service provider. It's not anticipated revenue this year. It was just a, an extra opportunity to create some revenue. And I think George actually had some, some training plans or I thought you had some plans for the revenue.
We did, but I'm not opposed to, yeah.
Okay, so that Counselor Zelinski, uh, your motion could go forward with the seconder. Counselor Gorlick seconds it. Further discussion, this would donate?
Yeah, so order, Mayor.
Yes.
Don't we, uh, another motion on the floor already, uh, with the staff recommendations? How do we actually pass that?
We have not. We have not voted on it.
No, you're amending approved the sale to you.
Yeah, we're amending that motion to make it a, a donation rather than a charge.
I see. So Counselor Zelinski's motion is a motion to amend.
And you were the seconder on that or?
I think I ended up being the mover.
Okay, so would you agree to that? That amendment?
You know what? Certainly, I, I'd much rather they just bought them a new set, a new set of suits and sent them away. And we put those dry suits in a closet somewhere.
Okay.
However, however, nonetheless, uh, I, I do, you know, in, in the whole of moving business forward, certainly I suppose, I support the amendment. Thank you.
Okay, so, um, we really haven't defined it in the motion that's on the floor. Do we want to add it to that wording?
Hi, excuse, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I'm just gonna jump in and, I'm kind of looking forward to Counselor Thompson's, uh, comments.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we have neglected Counselor Thompson.
Well, I know why you're rivaling, but, um, I, I support the, um, the, the, uh, both the original motion and the amendment thereto. Um, we're not losing the assets. They're staying in the community. They're not gonna be in a closet where they're gonna rot. Um, and I think donating it to search and rescue who are well-trained, uh, know the condition of the, uh, of the, the equipment. Um, wouldn't be making that offer if, if they didn't think that it was going to be useful to them.
Okay, supporting the motion as amended, which we haven't really clearly defined.
So, just, just to clearly define that, the motion will now read the council waive policy eight oh five and donate specialized swift water equipment that is no longer deemed necessary to ground for search and rescue.
So approve the sale removed and donate put in.
Correct.
That's the motion, council, you heard that? And it's been seconded. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, council.
Okay, thank you, George. And uh, down to the second item of business, which is the electric vehicle charging.
With the statement of financial.
Oh, did we miss that one?
Oh, no. Hope I didn't offend anyone. Just you, Juliette.
Or me, Juliette.
Okay, the uh, statement of financial information. Um, I'll leave this for, um, Mr. Redfern and staff to introduce. Juliette?
Yeah, so I think I'll, I'll jump in off, off of that. Um, so essentially, through your worship, this was an annual requirement of the municipality. There are some certain criteria required in there, financial condition, uh, wages, vendors, et cetera. There's some thresholds set through the charter. And I think Juliette's done an excellent job of comparing this. And really, Juliette, unless there's anything you want to add, it's really whether council has any questions, I think. Yeah.
Counsel.
Can we have that prep on the screen, please? I'm still seeing the fire rescue.
So the motions we're looking for is that council receives a statement, the financial information report as number one.
I'll move that.
And you want to add number two and, and say we combine them both? Council accepts and approves the statements and schedules included?
At, yeah, that's, that's the resolution that's up.
Okay, and seconder for that? Counselor Gor, Gorlick. Any discussion, questions? Uh, Counselor Zelinski.
Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, a lot, there's a lot of information here. Um, I got, I have one question on page nine of the, of the document itself. Budget figure is the very last one, where it says that, um, the, the chart is number, we're looking at is based on April 8th, uh, 2019 five-year financial plan. And, uh, sorry, I didn't get time to research it, but I was just wondering whether or not we made any other amendments past that April 8th date. It might affect, uh, some of these numbers.
Go ahead, Juliette.
Good, Mayor. Um, yes, we did actually have a, um, an amendment later on in the year in September. But we're required to actually use the original approved budget for our audited financial statements.
And that, that amendment wasn't any really thing, anything substantial, I can't remember.
Um, there, I, I'm trying to redline myself, but yeah, there was some, I think some capital project additions and, um, I, I believe too probably the DMAT grant, it was in the amended financial plan.
And just for clarification through your worship, I think typically, Counselor, towards the end of the year, Juliette and I have been chatting about this. There is a reconciliation where we go in and tweak all of the decisions councils made throughout the year that maybe have varied the budget. So this is, this is typical that there's some, some change. And look forward to doing that again this year with some of our changes in our reports here, probably in the fall.
Thank you.
I, I, I do have one other question. I, I think I know the answer to this, um, but just looking at the, the list of vendors. Uh, it's probably inappropriate to ask for the details of a few of them. And I guess it's the third one from the top that I was looking at. Uh, I'll, I'll leave that for another day.
Okay, thank you, council. And the motion is on the floor, uh, for the, uh, both resolution one and two in your, in your outline. All those in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Um, moving us to the next item, which is the E V charging update. That council received a report and instructs staff to present the city-owned E V electrocharge policy thirteen oh one for approval on July 20th. Regular meeting, so next month. Can I have that motion?
Get it on the floor. Yeah, just, yeah.
So I want to get the motion on the floor. Counselor Zelinski, you want to make the motion and second it by Counselor Gorlick? So it's on the floor and open for debate. And Counselor Zelinski.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, my only other, my only comment is great job. Uh, looks good to me. Thank you.
Okay, so it's moving it to the 20th. If we approve this resolution, I don't see any other hands up. All those in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Okay, and to the next item of business, which is the downtown traffic calming measures. And again, allowing probably Duncan and Daniel on this one.
Sure. So through your worship, the first thing that I'd like to point out is that this report is written following a little bit of a different format. And definitely looking for some feedback from council, uh, just regarding some of the additional sections that have been added into the report. In particular, the purpose section, the first, uh, the first section you see and really outlining exactly what the purpose of the report is and what we're doing. And we've added some additional sections under, uh, financial and strategic and risk, as well as a little heavier option section at the end. So this is something Daniel's taking a test drive on, as, as we put it in front of council. And really some information, uh, that just kind of rounds out the report, uh, a little bit. And, and so that's the first kind of piece. We'll look for some feedback on that, not necessarily right away. And, uh, outside of that, I think Daniel's done, uh, with Morris and, and as well as some other staff within the city, some incredible work in researching the downtown core. And so I'll, I'll kick this over to Daniel to, to maybe lead the discussion.
Sure, I can. Uh, like, um, at the end, we, we engaged a traffic engineer, um, to bring back some recommendation regarding the intersections in the downtown core. Um, following up on some of the previous requests from council, the, the chamber and the D B A, uh, to try and to create a safer downtown. Um, at the end of the day, uh, the recommendations, uh, that, that came out of the report are ultimately in front of council right now. The 30-kilometer speed zone would be seen as a, um, as, as an option for reducing, um, aid speed, but also reducing the risk of any sort of accidents in the downtown. That's, it's the, the initial step and possibly the cheapest step out of all of them. Um, the, uh, some of the other recommendations were basically taking a closer look, like an actual, uh, closer traffic count, uh, for some of the individual intersections. Um, and then turning the, um, Fifth Street south of Seventy Second, so by South Creek College towards the park, into a one-lane, um, street. Uh, simply for safety on that intersection. Uh, we could have a, a rollover accident there last year or the year before, can't quite remember. Um, and then, uh, there's some options regard, and they, they would be larger in expense around Eighth Street and Seventy Second Avenue that, that would have to be explored and that we could bring back, uh, at a future council meeting. So, um, I, I tried to list and summarize, uh, the recommendations, the options, uh, and some of the initial actions that would have to be taken here. Um, along with, um, later on in the report, I'm focusing some of the initial steps also on future communications and next steps that would have to happen, such as outreach, um, to the community, um, along with working with the R C M P to enforcing some of these items potentially.
And Daniel, just, and three worship, one other piece that Daniel's included in here that council may want to consider is that M O T I piece.
Oh, yes. So in the, in the option sections towards the end, um, uh, the option number, I think it's three. Um, when speaking with the R C M P, um, they, basically, they were, um, they asked me if we're also thinking of doing the, the 30 kilometer on the highway. Now, knowing that the traffic really gets congested in the summer anyways, this is an option, but we can't do it as the city. We would have to request it through M O T I. I know Greenwood has done it in the past, uh, where their main section over the summer last year was, was a 30-kilometer zone along the drag. So, uh, that's an option that council could, could do. However, the R C M P was hoping for us to do first the side streets and then in the future worry about the highway to, uh, to ensure that drivers are already adjusted to that 30-kilometer zone.
Okay, thank, thank you, Daniel. You covered all four of those motions basically in your discussion. And I see hands rising, Counselor Gorlick and then Counselor Zelinski, and then Counselor Moslin.
Okay, I just spoke to, um, one of the people that were, was not really sure about the, um, stop signs. And she, we talked and I think she's okay with it now. But that took the one, one concerned citizen. I think that put that to rest.
Counselor Zelinski.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I was gonna leave my comments for a bit later, but since the C A O brought it up about the, um, structure change in our reports. Uh, I just wanna say that right from the, uh, financial report, uh, E V policy, um, I thought these reports were, were excellent. And, um, it gave me all the information I needed to make a decision. So I, I really appreciate, um, what you have in front of us today. I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Moslin.
Thank you, uh, Mayor. Yeah, I, I would also like to reiterate, uh, Counselor Zelinski's, uh, comments that the, the, uh, the structure of the reports is much better, is clearer and, and has the information. Uh, especially I like the options. Uh, you know, I, I'm not a big fan though of trying to run through a whole bunch of motions as one. I, you know, all sorts of things get put together that don't necessarily give it, I hope, Mayor, that, I, I'm gonna have some comments and questions about this, but I hope we deal, eventually deal with these, these motions as one at a time, because I believe they are, there's some significant differences in, uh, in, in their, uh, intent. First off, I have a question. How does this report sync with the closing of market between second and third and third and fourth?
Okay, and I, I hear what you're saying, and I'm gonna ask for some kind of consolidation motions before we get moving on this. But I see the first one, the 30-kilometer zone in the, uh, indicated areas would be one where a solid decision could be made. And then some of the rest of it seems like it's, it's developmental in nature, that we're gonna be gathering more information and looking for, uh, answers uh, down the road on specifics. Counselor Moslin, is that the way you're reading it, that we need to separate off the first one?
Yeah, yes, Mayor, that, that's, that would be it exactly. Uh, uh, and I really do, I, I'm really glad that we are looking closely at that street. Yeah, yes, Mayor, that, that's, that would be it exactly. Uh, uh, and I really do, I, I'm really glad that we are looking closely at that street. Uh, and, and the other downtown streets, we do need to look closely at them. And as we, 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 council has embarked on two experiments here, uh, the four-way stop, the second market, and the, as well as a, a temporary closure of market. Uh, I, I really want to make sure that we have the observations ready, that we have the staff ready to make the observations, uh, so that we can fi- figure out whether, uh, that these experiments are successful. Um, anyhow, I, yes, I would concur, uh, with you, Mayor, that we should def- that further research is going to be needed. Uh, in fact, that's what the last three things are about. Uh, I, I'm quite, I, I, we did get, as far as I'm concerned, we got the cart a little bit before the horse. I wish we had done a little bit more research before we had suggested, uh, closures.
Well, and I understand there's quite a bit of manpower involved in some of this research and, and, uh, I'm not seeing anything, uh, ahead of the horse at this point or the, whatever the thing is.
So, so through your worship, Councillor Maslin, um, the same engineering firm that has done this work for us also worked on providing feedback with the closure. And that Third Street and, and keeping Third Street open really came from this traffic engineer saying, you don't want people doing U-turns, you're gonna increase, you know, some of your challenges. You should sway away from four-way stops and traffic calming and... So they were very intimately involved in that closure and, and have provided Daniel some information and some, some kind of thresholds to look for as we move through it so that we can report back, council. So, did I miss anything, Daniel?
Um, no, and, um, so, so the, the thirty kilometer zone isn't just focusing on market. It is focusing on the entire area from Riverside, um, all the way to Fifth Street, uh, as indicated on the map. And coming from the bridge, um, towards Ruckel, um, all the way, um, past, uh, Sablon Foods, like the, the back area there, Riverside, like on, on that end. So, so it's, the focus isn't just on market half year, the, the focus is on all the intersection that council had concerns with over the past year, such as Fifth and Seventy Second, such as Seventy Second and Second. Um, there, there's a lot more going on. I, I quickly want to also point out, um, the, the third motion that I listed there is actually, um, also to instruct staff to install signage for the one-way street by the park. So this is an immediate action as well, not a further research, uh, kind of situation.
Right, good point.
So, um, just wanting to make sure, like, I actually listed them individually as they are kind of individual, individual items at, at the moment. And I'm okay with going through them one by one if council so chooses.
Okay, we have a few, uh, hands up there and we should deal with that before we try and get into, uh, getting these, uh, lined up for approval. Councillor Korlick, you've left your hand up there, was that just by mistake?
Us, it was an error, sorry.
Okay, and Councillor Studley got neglected and then Councillor Thompson. Councillor Studley, did you have any comments on this?
Um, yes, uh, the only thing I would change is that, look, going back up there, there was a traffic count on Third Street. I'd almost postpone that till markets opened again, um, otherwise that data I could see being skewed. So that'd be my only comment.
Okay, and Councillor Thompson?
Yes, I, I, uh, wanted to echo, uh, compliments to our, our members, like, for the excellent reports that we're getting that give you the information you need to, to make a decision. Um, but I would personally recommend that, that we, um, deal with each recommendation as a separate item so that they can be discussed if there are concerns expressed, rather than doing this, um, as, as one lump sum.
Okay, and that's the plan, but Councillor Zelinski, before we get to breaking these into motions, you want to comment?
Uh, yes, just, uh, off, uh, Councillor, um, uh, Studley's comment, uh, we read, uh, hundred vehicles per hour as opposed to two hundred vehicles per hour. Whether or not the COVID situation actually, um, has fed into that and in eight months' time, it could be up to two hundred, I, just a, a question.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Thompson, do you want to lead us off with motion number one? Making that motion?
I will make that motion.
And the second after that? I see Councillor Korlick, open for discussion on the, uh, thirty kilometer speed zone in the designated areas that you see on the map. Um, no hands up?
Councillor Maslin.
Who?
Councillor Maslin, yes, Councillor.
Councillor Maslin, I'm sorry.
Thanks, thanks, Mayor. Uh, yeah, no, I, I, I generally, I, I'm in favor of this. However, the motion, it might be a little bit too inclusive. Uh, I thought the intent here was to basically do this in stages. Uh, I don't, I, I didn't, one of the stages recommended was going from fifty to forty and then thirty. But, yeah, you know what? I'm not all that keen on it. I, I do want to go in favor of, of thirty, uh, straight to thirty. But I, I'm wondering about the location. I thought one of the options was to just do south of the highway first and then later do north of the highway. Uh, in fact, uh, I would really, I, I, and you do have signs on your map on the highway. Well, actu- actually, I'm assuming the signs are facing the, uh, are side roads on the second, third, fourth and fifth. They're not posted on the highway because as I pointed out earlier, we've got no control over the highway. Anyhow, I, generally I'm in favor of the motion, but I'm wondering if we need to, uh, uh, make it more specific to a location? Uh, or should we just give a carte blanche based on the map?
Well, we'd be, I'd, we'd like to-
Jump in, yeah.
Mr. Redfern?
Yeah, so through your worship, the, the options are really alternatives, right? To what the resolution that's being recommended is. So if you want to make it just south of the highway, then you, you'd amend the motion that's on the table right now to indicate just south of the highway. Right now, the motion is for all of these areas, kind of all at once. So those options are alternatives or amendments if council wants to go down that path.
I don't personally and, and wouldn't support that, but let's hear from the other hands up here. Councillor Krog?
Uh, yeah, um, I've always been against the concept of the, um, course thirty downtown. Um, and, and the main reason is the only complaints, only complaints we've received and these complaints have been going back as long as I've been here are the three stop areas. The one straight across from Seltzer College, um, because you're coming over arrives, um, they wanted to see a stop sign there. The one way would help that, um, for one way into the campground. Um, but the other complaint was from the DBA and their main complaint was not about anywhere on the downtown, but it was specific to the people coming off the bridge. Right? So when the workers come from wherever and they, um, hit Second Street Bridge, um, they're going fifty. They're doing sixty and they, um, go right past that first intersection by the old dollar store and would just continue to go through. Then you would end up with sketchy lines, people trying to make their own, um, lines getting back out onto, um, Second. So that was their, um, complaint, was the people going down Second too fast. Um, so that's where the one four-way stop made sense, Second and Market. And the other one would be, um, make more sense, uh, by the dollar store, right? And, um, that's the one that's actually the worst of all of them because there's no distinct lines there and people are trying to go straight across, make a left, turn right, all in one link. Right? They're scraping in beside each other. You can't see squat coming out of there, so you have to be way out into the intersection. So those two four-way stops, uh, and if you did want one up by, uh, um, Seltzer, that'd be fine. Would have solved the problem completely. How many complaints have you had of people speeding down Market at over thirty? None. None. So now we're changing this whole thing when all we needed was two four-way stops. So, that's my opinion.
Okay, thank you councillor. And, uh, Councillor Zelinski?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm gonna go off, uh, I think it was Councillor Maslin mentioned. Um, it, it's not that I don't support the thirty kilometers, uh, downtown the way it's presented. You know, I have no real problem with that. I think we just have too much going on downtown right now. Uh, you know, we have a new four-way stop, we have market closed. Um, I would prefer that if this came back, at least the thirty kilometer piece after market was opened again, uh, it would make more sense for me. But, um, yeah, I, I can't support the thirty kilometers at this time for those reasons.
Councillor Korlick?
Well, I do know that, um, and I see it's none on the list, it's Seventy Fifth Avenue between Riverside and Sixth, I think. Uh, I know there was a petition, uh, that went into City Hall not too long ago regarding people speeding because there are no stop signs at all along Seventy Fifth and because of that, people just speed all over the place, or up and down the street anyway. Um, so it would, I think, maybe behoove us to reduce the speed on Seventy Fifth and see where that goes. Because I do know there's been complaints received. I hear them all the time. So I, I would really like to see that on the list.
Okay, and, uh, we've been around, around, uh, we have some opposition to this. The motion on the floor is as the map shows. If there is no desire to modify that, we're gonna vote on it. So the motion on the floor by Councillor Thompson, all those in favor? Raise your hands. We're gonna have to count this, one, two, three. Any further votes in favor? No, the motion fails. And do you want to modify this motion? Um, Councillor Maslin might be interested in a modification.
Yep, thanks, your worship. Yeah, this, this is sort of, again, I, I really, I like to echo what, uh, Councillor Krog said and Councillor Korlick. That we do have s- specific areas which are speed problems. And as it was pointed out by Councillor Krog, everybody's doing thirty on market anyways. Uh, the problem seems to be the parallel road, Second. I really, I concur. Uh, I, I don't even, I hope it's posted for fifty clicks. As Councillor Krog points out, that's sometimes a problem because it's even overlap. Uh, anyhow, and, uh, and Councillor Korlick, so, you know, I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater here. Uh, uh, anyhow, perhaps, uh, we could amend the motion if there's any appetite to install thirty kilometers an hour, uh, speeds in the signs on Second, uh, as well as Seventy Fifth.
Okay, I, I'm not sure that we're addressing the, the package here that's presented from, uh, Daniel. I wonder if, uh, uh, Mr. Redfern, you and Daniel could, um, uh, suggest a, a modification to this that might be acceptable to council?
Yeah, so, so first of all, the reason, I guess, the report is in front of you is because council had some concerns previously regarding, uh, safety in the downtown core. And my understanding is the four-way stops came about. So we went to a traffic engineer and said, look, this isn't what we do, this isn't our area of expertise or our skill set. And so can you make some recommendations? And he took a look at all those four-way stop locations and said, four-way stops, and I believe it's in the report, will not solve, in his opinion and his, his experience, will not solve the concerns that have been raised and will result in additional, uh, concerns of people speeding between four-way stops, uh, or, or other issues. People not stopping completely and, and could create further issues. So, you know, we're a staff not, not married, again, this is just essentially what they've recommended to us. If, if you don't want to look at the thirty kilometer zones, you can table, you can defer, you can ask for some more information. Picking individual roads may have some unintended consequences. Might be something we'd want to talk to the RCMP about if Second Street was thirty and everything else was fifty. So, you know, outside of kind of what the engineer has recommended, if there's another path you want to go down, we might want to do a little more research before it's implemented, albeit we don't know exactly what might come forward.
Daniel? Yeah, if, if I may add to that, um, the, the, the issue about enforcement and educating the public comes in. If you have an entire zone that's thirty kilometers, uh, it's easier to post signage in one way. Like, uh, for the south side, for example, there, we really only need eight signs to, to limit it to thirty kilometers an hour. While if you're trying to do a street, you'd have to worry about each intersection and ea- each area where people pull out to have additional signage along there. The RCMP was also more in favor of a zone coverage because it's easier to, to then enforce on there and if it comes to that, once the education period is over. Um, so, so that's really where it's at now. Uh, regarding what Councillor Zelinski was saying though, um, having a potential later start date on this, like starting with this potentially for the fall months after market half is open again, there, there's nothing wrong with that either. Um, this will take some time to get posts installed and whatnot anyways, if council chooses to still go ahead at some point.
The only other piece, council always has that ability through your worship to, to go out with intent. If you're concerned that, that maybe this isn't what the downtown is looking for, you have that ability to, to go out to the public and say, here's our intent, we've looked at this, here's the traffic study that's, you know, attached to the report. And, you know, we're looking at this and, and want feedback. So lots of different options and you don't necessarily have to settle on something today if it doesn't feel right.
And if, if I may add one, one quick item, the four-way stop situation on Second and Market. So I've received now a couple complaints about people, um, excessively speeding up as soon as they were stopped. So coming from Second and going like from the highway and going towards the bridge, as soon as they're past the intersection, that they're, they're flooring it, like even right in there and, and are shooting down the road. So I don't know if potential other four-way stops are gonna solve that problem uh, or if people are, are simply doing exactly what the traffic engineer predicted what would happen.
Okay, uh, councillor, I think there's a good argument at this point to table this, uh, issue. But I'm gonna go around starting with Councillor Krog, Thompson and who else had their hand up?
Yeah, that was, like, if we'd want to go thirty, um, a blanket zone, that's fine. Um, if, uh, we could wait till the fall, whatever council's wish is. Uh, my, um, I guess objection more was to the, the traffic study and just what Daniel just said about the cars speeding up and stuff. So if you're speeding up, once you leave that to go hit the bridge, um, then guess what? That's why it has to be two signs. If you take the top of the bridge and you stop right away, there is no chance to accelerate um, between that corner and the next four-way stop and between that four-way stop and the highway. So it's, if you have one, that's exactly what's happening. People, oh yeah, there's the one four-way, okay, now we can boot it. No, it's just that one strip of highway has just got two stops. Um, quick, easy, no, um, ability to actually increase your speed. And as for, um, the rear-end collisions, yeah, if you look at the generic report, if you have a stop sign, you increase your risk of a rear-end collision anywhere. Anywhere. If you have no stop signs, you will have very minimal, um, rear-end accidents ever. And what lights, anything. So that's a total red herring to say that, um, the more stop signs you have, uh, it'll increase your, um, rear ends. Yeah, it, it can generically and, and that's basically why I have objections to it.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Thompson?
Uh, thank you. Um, these recommendations are based on, um, an expert report that we, uh, consultant's report that we paid for. Um, and I think that it is something that needs to be followed. I concur that, um, with Councillor Zelinski, that perhaps, uh, defer this until after, um, uh, the summer. Uh, and I also agree-
Uh, and I also agree with what the mayor said, or I think it was the mayor, putting it out for, um, in, this is what we intend to do. Um, but I'm certainly not an expert on, on, on traffic. Uh, I know what I see, and some of it I don't like. Um, people not stopping at stop signs or going, uh, delts, uh, down the street. But we have to start somewhere, and I think before we stop at Market and Second was a, was a, um, a, a good start. And I think reducing these speed limits to thirty is also a good start.
Thank you, councillor. And, and again, without wanting to discourage Daniel, I see a real appetite to move forward with this. Uh, but maybe not the ability at this point to make, uh, decisions here today. But we certainly don't wanna discourage this direction of further developing this report. Councillor Corlick has her hand up.
Yes, I, I agree. I, I, I agree with councillor Crox that possibly, uh, another four-way stop at Seventy-Second, I think it's Seventy-Second, and Second would certainly alleviate some of the speeding through there. And honestly, you have to pull so far out of those intersections to, to, uh, turn left that I, I, I really hate them because I think you set yourself up for more issues than stop signs nearby. But I'd also like to see Seventy-Fifth on the list because it is a true, true fair. And I, I know how happy people would be to see the, um, speed limit reduced. If we're not gonna put stop signs or speed things in, whether it's not bumps because that's snow removal, but if it was, I don't know what you call them, a cross, maybe that would work. I don't know. But it's important to reduce the speed on Seventy-Fifth as well because there's so many people out on the streets, whether bike riding or walking, there's children, everything. So I would like to see Seventy-Fifth added to the list.
Okay, we're getting into the specifics again that we said we would try to avoid. Uh, but I, I see Daniel making mad notes here to take into consideration the concerns that council is expressing. I hope that councillor Moslin at this point can help me dispose of this matter today. Councillor Moslin?
Uh, now, it's my, maybe your worship. First off, I'd like to speak in favor of the report. I do wanna make sure and echo councillor Thompson's comments, uh, that we've called upon experts. And I do, I, I really speak in favor of this process. We're calling in experts, we're calling in our staff in order to analyze and, and improve traffic in our downtown core. I do, I really speak against making any decisions today, that we defer this, that we continue to study it with the intent of making changes. We have made two profound changes already. We put a four-way stop on Second and Market, against some expert advice, I might add. And we have closed temporarily Market, uh, between Second and Third, between Third and Fourth. Again, it wasn't unanimous, uh, by, by any stretch. I really think we need to make, let those, continue to watch those changes play out. And that we, with that knowledge that we're gonna gain this summer, come back to this report in the fall.
So councillor Moslin?
Uh, to, to, and perhaps take whatever observations we get during the summer and, um, um, and bring it back in the fall. So maybe...
Councillor Moslin, would you also say that you would support taking the, the, uh, the question out to the public in terms of how extensive they wanna see these changes so that we can put something in front of the public as we go through the summer?
Absolutely, Mayor, and perhaps also invite the mayor, the public to make observations on the changes we have made.
Okay.
Uh, as well as, uh, contemplate the future changes. Anyhow, I, I'm quite, I'm, I'm glad, I thank you, staff, for taking, taking this out to an expert for assembling their excellent report. Uh, this is a complicated thing. We've made some profound steps. We need to continue to study it, uh, to see how all plays out. Thanks.
Thank you. And councillor Crox?
Yeah, I, maybe I missed it in the report, but I don't remember. Like, they're, um, doing a traffic study. They're looking at cars. They're counting how many cars going through. But that example of, uh, um, Second and Seventy-Second is, um, I don't remember seeing anything about what I witnessed every single day about the cars crowding each other and trying to get out into that, um, intersection as well as anybody coming from the other side, the fire hole side. So I didn't see anything about that or times that, okay, an average car sits there for five minutes trying to get out as opposed to, uh, four away, which could be thirty seconds. So unless it's in there and I missed it, and that's sort of one of the issues I'm having, I'll go back and look. But how can you, yeah, how can you say it's not warranted when that data isn't there?
And councillor, again, I think that at this point, those suggestions are being written down and that, uh, further discussion on this matter will address them. Uh, Duncan?
Yeah, so I, and I see councillor, through your worship, councillor Zelinski has some comments. But what he's done, uh, maybe be able to capture what council's looking for in, in somewhat of a motion. And then we can kinda go from there, just from listening to the conversation.
Yes.
So maybe we'll wait for councillor Zelinski to have something.
Okay, councillor Zelinski, and then we're gonna wrap this up with a, a summary motion. Councillor Zelinski?
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna muddy the waters a little bit more here.
We're gonna go.
Uh, so, uh, so we, we see, um, thirty kilometers, uh, I see the map, uh, labeled core commercial. Uh, it's to slow the traffic down, to get people into the downtown, um, making our, our downtown a more, I guess, walkable community. Um, we wanna hear what the public thinks about it. Boy, it's sure ticking all the boxes for an OCP review. That's what it's kind of sounding to me, that, uh, taking all these issues and it should be rolled into your OCP and ask the, the community, do you want your downtown a walkable community and whatnot? So I think we're tinkering around with things that are gonna be addressed in the OCP, you know, at the end of the day.
Thank you. All right, uh, Mr. Redfern?
Sure. So I heard that councillor Zelinski, and, and I, again, I'm not as fluent as I'd like to be with our OCP. But I, I do know there is some, um, walkability, bikability, and, and kind of some safety broad overarching statements. But one of the challenges with our current OCP is, you know, as I've heard from Dolores, is we can make anything fit in it, which isn't necessarily good either, right? So, but, but what I've heard is Seventy-Second and Second, uh, a four-way maybe warrants some additional information on why or why not that, why that's a good idea or why it wouldn't be a good idea. I've also heard that council would like to get some feedback, uh, regarding the current changes with Market uh, and with the four-way that was just installed. And, uh, I'm adding this in myself, and I'm not sure if this is where council's at or not, but some feedback regarding the fact that council might consider some thirty kilometers. So not, not committed to it, but this is an option that council's looking back, uh, looking at. And some feedback in that area with everything kind of wrapped up in a bow for the fall.
Does that summarize it adequately, council? I see nods going on. And can we, uh, form a motion to deal with this today?
Yeah, I think that's it right now. That, that directs staff, and, and we'll tweak it a little bit after. But essentially, we're directing staff, uh, to review and, and take some additional information regarding Seventy-Second and Second and a potential four-way. We're also looking, uh, directing staff to get some feedback regarding the current changes that have just happened on Market, uh, closure and the four-way. We're also, uh, directing staff to get some feedback around the potential or the option of thirty kilometer zones in the downtown area. And, and directing staff to bring that back for the fall.
Okay, it's sort of a small novel, and I have a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Councillor Thompson makes a motion as seconder for that. I see councillor Moslin. Okay, it is, uh, lengthy, but it really is specific about the things that you've raised here this morning. So I'm very pleased with it and will vote for it. Councillor Zelinski?
Uh, yes, um, I, I agree with the motions as presented. I would like to try and pull out that third motion because I think it's a done deal. If you ask me, it's, it's a safety issue that should be addressed before we have trailers pulling in and out of that campground. So I'm...
Pull the one-way.
Do you wanna deal with that as a separate issue here, that we approve the motion that's been suggested, or you wanna add that?
No, no, I'll, I'll tell you what, after the motions that are sitting on the table now are, are voted on, I'll see if I can get a seconder for motion number three, just to clean that up because I don't think that everything we talked about really addresses that issue, and I think it's, it's a smart...
It's immediate and needy. You would agree?
Yeah, we, our intent was to drop all of the other motions, so if there's one in particular the council wants to bring back, then they should.
Okay. So on the motion that, uh, Mr. Redfern has just read into the minutes, all those in favor? And opposed, and councillor Zelinski, you're on.
Uh, yeah, I'd like to make a motion that the council instructs staff to install signage to change Fifth Street south of Seventy-Second. That's a little short, uh, piece by Southard going into the, uh, campground. Uh, to a one-way lane downhill toward City Park with the exit through the City Park parking lot.
And a seconder for that motion. Councillor Thompson, discussion? Seeing none, I would ask for the vote on it. All those in favor? Thank you very much. That motion is carried.
I'll pull up the fourth motion.
Um, the fourth motion that, that I've been instructed to look at here, council instructed search options through the intersection at Eighth and Seventy-Second. Was that on the list of things that you pointed out to Mr. Redfern?
No. So through your worship, this is, uh, this is a different area.
Yeah, so, so, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, um, the intersection of Eighth and Seventy-Second is, uh, is, is just, uh, down, down road here, a little bit further from Southard College, another three intersections. Uh, it, it was brought to the, when the traffic engineer was looking at our downtown, um, he wasn't, um, i- it's not very common to see intersections like that. It's, it's a da- dangerous kind of in, a corner. Um, and so there is a couple other ways that we could deal with that, with like our small roundabout or, or tra- small traffic circle to, to keep traffic flowing properly, um, slash pedestrians a little bit safer along there, and, and cyclists as well. Uh, there is a daycare down the road from there. There's also an, uh, Phoenix Manor, a retirement home community, um, as well along there. So it, it's, it's one of those areas where a little bit of speed control, a little bit of directional, um, safety for changing lanes or turning uh, is not a bad idea. And, uh, the, the stop signs there weren't quite maybe the right solution.
Okay, so this seems like, uh, uh, again, something that we can, uh, approve in terms of thinking forward to how this is addressed. So it's researching options and, uh, basically planning it for the 2021 budget. Can we have a motion on this, number four? Councillor Thompson, councillor Corlick, further discussion on this? Again, looking, this is researching options, so, uh, it's pretty open-ended, but it says, let's address this issue. And I see councillor Moslin, then councillor Corlick?
Yes, I certainly, I'm in favor, continue to research this intersection. Uh, and I, I concur with the, uh, uh, corporate officer's description of the amount, number pedestrians who live there. It is, it is almost like walking central, including, of course, the CalPath that is there. Uh, uh, so I'm, I'm quite in favor of going forward to research. I, I did read the options, whether a roundabout would be appropriate there if you were gonna have, uh, industrial traffic and our emergency vehicles there. Anyhow, our, uh, realignment of the corner. But I, yeah, I do hope that we do, after considering some of these options, that council does make a decision to improve the safety of this intersection, too.
Thank you. And councillor Corlick?
Thank you for bringing this intersection up. I, um, I'm looking forward to see some of the research and the possible solution to a very awkward corner, turning, walking. It's very, it is, um, a challenge to walk that way, which I do frequently. It's, so I'm happy to see that that's under research again, so thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor. And I don't see any further hands up. Uh, it sounds like, uh, there's, there's some solid support for this. I'll ask for the motion. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Well done, council. Uh, we got some work done here. It was a messy situation, but I think we've made some forward steps. Um, the next item of business is the, uh, release of information from in-camera. We have one item at this point, which is our plans for moto, and I would ask Mr. Redfern if he wants to comment on it.
Sure. The only comment through your worship is, uh, council should expect to see this on the open meeting as we move forward as far as follow-up and release of items. Some, some days there will be a number of items, and other days there may not be anything. But, uh, our intent moving forward is to, to deal with these and release them as we move forward and get them out to the public as quick as we can.
Right, and again, th- this will be a regular item on our, our structure of our meetings. I think this is gonna be hygienic and keeping that record clean. Thank you. Um, and the, the next item of business is, uh, the resolution under section ninety to go in-camera.
Sorry, through your worship, we'll, we'll ask councillor to just receive it. Uh, councillor, receive the memorandum regarding item release from in-camera for your worship. So we'll just ask you to receive it, that one.
Okay, yeah. Can I have a motion to receive for that previous item, uh, regarding in-camera? And councillor Corlick, councillor Moslin, all those in favor, receive. Thank you. Okay, and again, um, the section ninety, we'll have to clear the room. Can I have a motion under section ninety in the hallowed, adjourned meeting?
Got questions.
Oh, just a moment. We have a question from the public.
Just give me a second here.
Hold on a second on that, section ninety.
I'm just gonna get the appropriate public up here. Okay, so ah, I have, uh, a couple of comments on traffic calming from some of your longtime viewers, actually. Um, one, one is, uh, as a pedestrian, I like the idea of thirty kilometers an hour. That was Deborah LaFleur. Um, Glynnis Anderson, very much hoping that a thirty-kilometer speed zone will continue along Seventy-Second, and moreover, that it will be enforced. Some vehicles are going eighty K and even a hundred K on Seventy-Second near Fifth Street.
So we've had a lot of attention today to Seventy-Second Street for Glynnis?
Yeah, yeah. And, uh, my own comment was, uh, I was listening to the comments from the councillors on this and, uh, uh, somebody pointed out that we don't even know the results of what's gonna be happening with what you're doing downtown yet, and you're talking about moving on. And that reminded me of when you had the deer issue going on. Uh, one of the councillors pointed out that council was moving ahead to change the bylaws they already had when the bylaws they had in place had never been actually tested or enforced. So, pretty, to me, that's just a thing that this council, as a body, does, not necessarily the people in this council per se. Um, the other thing that somebody wanted to ask about was, you have now got in the question period a section called potential decisions from registered delegations, which sometimes you cover and sometimes no- nothing ever gets talked about. Today, it didn't actually get discussed or anything like that. And they're curious of what that new section is about, why it's...
Well, and I can tell you that, uh, when Duncan arrived, he made a suggestion, which I really appreciate, that you don't make decisions in front of delegations, that we have done this before. And I think there's an element of, of influence both directions. And so it's a much cleaner process. If we hear the delegations, we consider the issue and we deal with it in the agenda as we have placed this item so that we, we have that opportunity. If there's been anything in the delegation section that needs approval, we then approve it in the delegation.
Okay, and, uh, I got, it's basically two more things. Um, councillor Studley alluded to this in his report. Um, so the city is not having a Canada Day celebration, COVID-related, I get that. And they've also canceled the Canada Day parade. So the group I'm in has a float, and, you know, it's almost ready for parading around. And we've decided that we don't need a parade, we're just gonna parade our float around, maybe pick up garbage. And, uh, you know, I, I kind of wondered why, why do we need, like, we could have a parade in this town. Everybody with a float could just get out and do what we're gonna do, start where they want, cover whatever route they want, as long as they play by the rules and their float is legal to be on the street. The police won't have any problem with that as long as they realize that they are not in a procession and they are indeed just... and they are indeed just another vehicle.
It looks like anarchy from the outside, but it's really organized.
It could be. Well, think Pac-Man with all the little things going on their own way. But, but essentially, I talked that up and a whole bunch of people thought about it and thought it was a good idea. I applied for a permit and the next day they took it away because I couldn't satisfy all of the permit needs. I get that. But they have talked to the police about this. And they don't have a problem if people want to take their parade floats out and parade around. And the DBA in the chamber would love it if, for instance, the ATVs, most of them, especially not the ones that aren't side-by-side, cannot travel legally on the street. Some of them can't. But the invitation's out there that if they want to, this is between ten and two on Canada Day, if they want to come down to the blocked-off portion of Market and do their own show and tell with their own thing, as long as they're being COVID-aware, they're invited. And anybody who's got a parade float can come down and park it there so people can enjoy it. Um, you know, just no parading on Highway Three on Central, for sure. And, and other than that, just be nice. And here's the other idea that's possible in this is that there are parts of this town that have never seen a parade come down their street, that they may see floats. And if you have a car and you want to be a float, just put some balloons on it and a Canada Day flag and go out there and be a damn float, excuse my language. But, uh, yeah, that, that was my crazy idea and unfortunately, I haven't been pushing it. I'm really good with ideas, but I've discovered that I'm a lousy promoter. So you're all hearing that now. Other people have heard it. And I'm going to try and put something together before, two days from now, but I know it's really late. And I don't expect that all floats will be available, but hey, that's, that's my thing.
All right, and Mr. Redfern?
Sure. And, uh, through your worship, and again, I'm still learning how things work here. I can tell you, in, in my previous life, one of the reasons why permitting and road closures were implemented had to do with, uh, legal vehicles on, on roads, right? ATVs, you've mentioned that. The other piece was insurance and this came about when a young boy ran out to pick some candy up on the road in one of the floats. Uh, fortunately, um, it was not fatal, but, but nonetheless, there was an incident and, and the boy was injured. And from that point over, you, you needed that, and I forget the correct terminology, but the parade master essentially and that overarching organization to hold some insurance.
Yep.
Uh, because typically it's happening on, on, you know, public roads or on city property and default falls to the city. So a lot of it is really looking at, there is a plan to manage the public. There is a plan to ensure that, uh, there, there's insurance and that there's some safety protocols in place. And I imagine that's similar here and that's why they have the.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I, I get that. And I'm hoping that nobody, like that everybody is respectful of this. And in the document I put out there is a kind of guidance for this. I said, you know, don't, don't throw treats at the kids. Basically, you're enticing them to run up the street and with COVID, who knows? And I hope that nobody gets me in trouble because I'm pretty sure that if somebody gets sued, I'll be at the top of the other list of names to get sued because it's my crazy idea, but oh, well. Okay, the last thing I wanted to say. This will be my last city council meeting. And it's been a pleasure and an honor to do this. Uh, I've done a number of other things in the community and I, I decided to leave this position primarily because of the aggravation I was getting. And it turns out that that was probably not a bad idea. Um, my dad died at the age of forty-seven from a heart attack. He just went. And the last couple of days, I've been having twinges and roughly in the area of my heart. And I think it's basically time for me to say, well, I only want to do things that are really for me. I mean, really, I've done an awful lot of pushing for this town and I think that it's time for me to move on. So not only will I stop doing this, but I'm going to start looking for people to take over administering the What's Up in Grand Forks account. And I'm probably going to cashier all my websites out before the end of the year so I don't have to worry about paying for things that I have no use for. And when I've actually quit before of things, I've had people come up and try to suck me into their boards. Let me tell you, I am not available for anybody's boards because that's politics and politics is highly stressful and I really don't want to have anything to do with that anymore. But that's it. That's my goodbye and I wish you all good luck.
Thank you very much for all the service, Les. It's been a major part of keeping this community in touch with itself. And I know that council feels the same way. Um, it's with regret that we see you go, but I totally understand the stress levels, although I never suffer from any stress. Some people do. Councillor Korlik?
Just quickly to say thank you, Les, for all the time you've given to us as a council. I, um, have appreciated through the years your hard work. So thank you again and I wish you well and your new direction you're going to be taking.
Thank you.
Councillor Thompson?
Yes, I'd like to also say thank you, Les. Um, you provided an, an absolutely outstanding service to, uh, both the council and to, uh, and to the community as a whole. And, um, if you're having twinges, I think you're wise to step back, look after number one. Nobody else is going to do that for you.
I agree. Thank you.
Okay, council?
One, one last thing.
Yes.
For those who missed the parade that the grads had and maybe missed the proset, the actual ceremonies, uh, I recorded those and I also livestreamed them and they're available and will be for at least the rest of the summer off of GFTV, so that's all up there. And oh yeah, I forgot to mention this. We don't have GFI this year. It's not happening, but it would be happening right around now. And I have two years of GFI that I streamed, which, I mean, they're not perfect video or anything like that. But the other day, what I started doing was I started doing a retro GFI. So every day that I have GFI from the twenty fourteen and the twenty fifteen seasons, every day, there's a new retro GFI post that has the games from that day on it. So it goes until the fifth of July.
Wonderful, man. I've been voting on it with my friends and, you know, betting on the, on the races there. It works really well when you know the outcome.
And that's going until July fifth, so people can tune into that.
Thank you very much, Les. All right, council, a motion under section ninety is written. And I see councillor Thompson and second councillor Studley. All those in favor? I'll adjourn as we wait to clear the room and call it back to order once we're ready. Thank you, council.